Good afternoon, welcome. September tenth, twenty twenty-four, our finance meeting. I call it the order. This question we hold over.
Mr. Hyde.
Yeah.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Wood. Please be here.
Please be here, please.
Mr. Doctor.
Are there any items to be added to the agenda? No, sir.
No, sir.
No items to be added, I'll end in a motion for the improvement agenda.
Uh-huh.
Move second.
Second.
Move that with second. Agenda will be approved. Got it? Alright, we're going to agenda number five, the business. Item eighty, FY twenty twenty-five, places of minutes, agenda half.
Yes, it's nice to be with you all this afternoon. We hadn't had a finance meeting in quite a while, so it's nice to get back together. You all should have already gotten these amendments in your Friday update. They have been advertised now for two weeks, but I felt like it was necessary for us to go over them. It's quite a large figure and I wanted to dissect that a little bit and maybe have a chance for you all to ask questions in this type setting as opposed to at the board meeting. So, we're gonna get started just with an overview of the changes. So, the total adjustments that are being requested are forty point eight million dollars. And that seems like a huge number, but I wanted to break that down a little bit for you. So, our general fund adjustments, which is the main crux of, you know, which you all would be interested in, is nineteen million one hundred seventy-two thousand nine forty-seven twenty-five. Of that amount, fourteen million nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine seventy-five thirty-one are transfers. So, just to give you a little background, transfers are counted as expenditures to our general fund and revenue to the fund that it's going to. So, the majority of that transfer are for the school carryovers, which Ms. Worley and Dr. James came and talked to you all about, that they were gonna request those and that was the money they had left over at year end. So, their, their transfer from general fund, so at the end of the year, all of the school funds come back to our general fund and we have to reappropriate that at the beginning of the next year if you also choose to give them their money back. And most of that money, or really all of their money, has been pre-obligated. So, it's on things that they need to spend that money on. So, we're just now having to appropriate the expense of that thirteen million dollars to give it back to schools. The other million or so dollars is going to your capital improvements fund and we'll discuss that in just a little bit. So, just the carryovers, which are departmental requests, total four million one seventy-four nine seventy-one ninety-four. A great majority of that is in your non-departmental department and so we will go through those. So, the funds that make up the other part of the forty million dollars is your school fund adjustments. They total twenty million two oh three six fifteen thirty-one. Thirteen million of which is that carryover request. The other funds are state and federal funds. Our beautification funds adjustments, there are, there is a total of seventy-four thousand seven hundred one oh one that needs to carry forward. Head center fund adjustments of sixteen thousand one hundred and four forty. Our grants fund adjustments, something exciting, we received one hundred and sixty thousand dollars that was given to us through the State Department of Education and we really need to thank Danny Marshall and that group for pushing that forward. That is for the renovations they've run the library, so we just need to appropriate those funds. And then our capital improvements fund, which is part of that fourteen point nine million, is one million one ninety-one seven sixty-nine twelve. So, the general fund, the departmental request, I'm just gonna go over the large ones just because I feel like they're the ones that we need to touch on. So, the departmental requests were pretty much one million eighty-five two seventy-five eighty-four. And just so you all know, those were actual dollars that remain in budgets at year end. So, this is not bogus made up or anything like that. So, our sheriff's carryover totaled eight hundred and eight thousand three twenty-fourty-eight. The majority of that money is going to be held in our lease line item for cars and we're gonna have a separate topic on those, so we'll talk about that in just a few minutes. So, the rest of those is to fill in things that we feel like the sheriff may be short on for the coming year. And that money did remain in his budget basically because of vacancy savings, because we have quite a few vacancies in the sheriff's department and jail. Our CSA carryover, CSA stands for Children's Services Act. That is a mandated program through the state of Virginia and any money that they have left in their pool program should roll to the next year just because of timing of payments. So, right now, they have until September to pay June invoices. And so, they'll actually hit this year's budget instead of last year's budget, so it's just a timing of those payments. And then the CD carryover, which is your community development department, we're carrying over a total of one hundred and seventy-six thousand three eighty-nine eighty-four, primarily because of plan reviews that are having to be done. We've lost some staff in that department that do review and we've got new staff already hired, but they haven't been certified yet. So, it's that interim part that we're trying to make sure we have sufficient funds to cover. Under non-departmental carryover requests, they, they total two point three million dollars. The majority of these funds, which is roughly two point two million, they are carryover monies for our salary pot where we keep money available in case we have to reevaluate jobs. That is also to cover any cost of living adjustments. It's also there to cover our merit increases that are in there and also for any health insurance premiums. So, the way we budget for health insurance premiums in our departments is we only budget for those folks that have the health insurance coverage. So, if I hire somebody in the finance department that replaced someone that was on their husband's insurance and they need insurance, I need to get that premium from somewhere. So, we keep those funds kind of available. That is not an absolute, I'm gonna spend all this money, but it's just there as a holding pot. The remainder of that carryover, which is about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, is for your grant local matches and board contingencies. In this current FY twenty-five budget, you all have very little money that you have. If something comes up on the board level and you wanted to give somebody twenty-five thousand dollars or what have you. So, we wanted to make sure that you all had something in your budget pot that you could maybe have if you needed to draw on something.
So.
Yes.
This chair, question. So, this, this hundred and forty thousand dollars, now this is already back to the end of this year, right? Or that this?
No, this is money that we're carrying over from FY twenty-four to twenty-five. So, it's monies that were remaining or the monies that we decided in this year's budget that, oh, that's not gonna be needed, so we moved it over instead of eliminating.
So, it's in this current calendar?
It will be once you all approve.
So, will we have what?
Move to FY twenty-four.
Just wanna make sure.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
And so, just to go a deeper dive into your school fund, that carryover request is thirteen million three eight thirty-seven nine seventy-five thirty-one. You all should have a copy of that letter in your board packet that outlines every single dollar to the penny, that thirty-one cent, into projects, into programs, into textbooks. It's in a great number of different areas. I would ask that you all look at that if you're concerned about any of that. We can certainly make calls to the school board to ask them about that. But everything that I've checked out is in line with what they normally ask. This is a large request and it's primarily due to the fact that they are trying to spend down their ARCA funds and some of these funds are still lagging out there because you gotta spend those first before you can start in on these funds. So, then your school budget amendment request, these are monies that came in after we approved our FY twenty-five budget back in April. So, of course, the state hadn't completely finalized all of their numbers and so, we're getting one million one fifty-five five fifteen additional federal funds and state funds of five million two seven three twenty-five. And then, there's a miscellaneous receipts amount that needs to be adjusted of twelve hundred dollars. So, that's how you get that figure.
Just to reiterate, that thirteen million three thirty-seven nine seventy-five thirty-one, that is already in coverage. That money is already in our, so, you know, this, you know, I know it looks like.
Don't think it's that.
It's already a lot of money, but it's not, it's already spent.
Correct, correct, it's already been.
Just ten like you didn't see.
Any other questions about school? And just so you know, that additional school budget amount of six point three million dollars, that's why that six percent additional that you all gave was so important, because things like that pop up and if we had only done the bare minimum, you would also, I would be requesting you all take fund balance to give them the additional local dollars needed to draw that six point three down. But because we budgeted sufficiently, we did not have to provide any more local funding to draw down that six point three billion. So, that's great news. I hope they don't get any more than what they get. I mean, it's wonderful that they're getting more, but sometimes it costs us more too in order for them to get that. So, our FY twenty twenty-five capital project review, do you have any questions about the forty point eight? Because, you know, it, it is very large, it is very necessary. But just be aware that some of that money, yes, we're carrying it over, but it's almost like to give you kind of a safety net. I mean, it's not like that we're gonna spend every dollar of that money, so don't get scared away by it. And like I said, twenty-six million dollars of that funding is, you know, really not real fun. I mean, you got fifteen million, that's a transfer and then you've got most of that money coming, that's state money or somebody else's money, not yours.
Only on paper.
For the most part. The dollars start walking when you start spending them, so. But that's it as far as FY budget amendments. So, if, if we're keen and I'll just move on down the list to take that back. So, the next item is your capital projects for review. This is the next one, your budget resolution that you all passed and it's in there, it's been in there for a long time, that you all have to review that list annually to make sure that you're aware of what capital projects we have budgeted, how they are funded and that kind of thing. So, you, this is the same type of list that you got last year, just with updated figures. So, this will include the carryover from these funds because capital automatically carries over in that same project as well as the new projects. So, your capital improvements fund, which we refer to as Fund Three Ten, it has a total of ten million nine hundred thirty-six million two hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventeen cents allocated or will be allocated after we do some budget amendments. So, we have that list that's in there and we'll go over that a little bit and I'll touch on some of the highlights.
That was ten million nine hundred thirty-six thousand.
Thousand, did I say nine hundred thirty-six million, sorry. It's lame, I need to get home. The water and sewer fund, which we refer to as Fund Five Oh One, is four point six million and the solid waste one, a fund, which is Fund Five Twenty, has two point seven million dollars allocated for capital. So, we'll start, and I know you can't see these numbers up on the screen, so some of the things that I wanted to point out are the major projects that are in here. We have the Moses Building, that has been included in this capital projects list. We also have.
Wait, I'm sorry, which, which list?
The Three Ten, right, and you should have it in your board packet. So, if you scroll through your board packet, you will have this, this in big, big, so you can see it. So, keep on looking to your next item. But it should look like what's on the screen, but it's just a little bit they were forcing to look at.
On that Moses Bill, we finished that project?
Oh, no.
Have we started?
Well, they said they could go over this one. In three, it gets started in a couple of weeks, I think that'd be good.
I think there's a.
Were we out of that, sir?
I think it's a hiccup on the replaced power and dominion and they're having some conversations from the office.
Just taking a while, okay. Really presented back in twenty twenty. I said we probably just thought in a couple of weeks, I figured that was getting close.
I believe Scott's table, hold the windows in till you.
Okay, I guess it'll be alright.
So, just to get the big major categories of the capital improvements fund, under our computer capital outline, we're spending a total of hundred and four thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. That's our available balance. And so, we've got some HR software that's been budgeted. We have community development, public access. We want them to be able to get building permits and stuff offsite, so that's at forty thousand. And then, you'll see that negative thirty-one thousand seven sixty-nine twelve. We received a refund of that money in the month of July that you all will be appropriating back and so that will zero out that particular loan item. And then, our telephone system upgrade was fifty thousand. Under building and grounds improvements, this does not include the Moses Building, they have their own separate line. It sits at one million seventy-five thousand two 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 forty. So, that's the carryover plus the additional three hundred you all put in for this year. And so, that's for anything that might come up during the year, have to replace HVAC, put up a wall or somebody needs, you know, some, some renovation done that we hadn't previously budgeted anywhere else. Um, yes.
Question. Recently, didn't the Fed go out for three HVAC systems for DSS, is that?
That's, no. So, the HVACs for the DSS department, we're gonna be able to use ARCA funds for that and I'm trying to get that obligated before the end of December. There may be some of this money that we'll have to put with it, but we have roughly about three hundred and some thousand dollars left of our ARCA funding, so we will use that first.
Quick question. Climax, still building this?
Yes, yes, there has been quite a bit of that work done.
I thought so, but.
Yep. Under fire and rescue, you can see all those items, I'm not gonna call them all out. Nothing additional that I need to share with you all. We will be, since after July one is when we approved for the one sixty, you don't see that right now, but you will. So, that's part of your grand list of the FY twenty-five amendments. Yes.
Ken, under fire and rescue, the career staff apparatus, three sixty-two, what is that?
The career staff apparatus is for an ambulance.
What's the one?
That's one that they're gonna purchase for public safety. So, that's gonna be one that's, that's what they mean by career.
Yeah.
So, it's from, yeah, for us.
Yeah, I get that, the worst, that one too. It's not around six forty.
No, I think they're gonna take the six forty ambulance that they currently have, that used to be at six forty and took that back at six forty.
Correct. And public safety is key with you.
And I'm not sure where that, that will be held right off, but we can find out for Mr. Pena when he knows. So, that total for fire and rescue is one billion eight ninety-five eighty-five oh seven. Then our community and industrial development, that's usually our catch-all for everything else that's kind of a non-departmental or our main departments go into. So, that totals seven point eight million dollars. The largest piece of that is the broadband infrastructure. So, schools put in five point five million dollars. They have just recently spent all of that money and we have started making payments to West Piedmont for our share of that. And so, this six point five, once we utilize all of that funding, we are still on the hook as accounting to provide River Street with four point five million dollars finishing up that project. And so, that's part of the projects that we will go over in the future that we'll have to provide funding for in some way, whether that be, I feel like we'll borrow that fund, those funds. So, this project is due to end calendar year twenty-five. So, you're looking at the end of this fiscal year or early twenty-six, FY twenty-six and borrowing those funds, so.
Ken, we're first, my people remember, but I'm just talking to you, you probably got through this, but as far as the, what we'll end up pulling on the internet, I was thinking that some of the revenue that comes back will offset that.
Yes, once they get a certain take rate on customers, we do have a revenue sharing agreement with River Street and that money will come back to help us offset that debt payment.
And do you have any idea how much that would be?
No, no, I mean, we got some different figures, but it's based on the take rate.
We can provide you all with that with the update. It is around two thousand to twenty-five hundred subscribers that need to be added within that project. And so, I believe as of the last update from River Street at the, on this work session, we were around, what, eight hundred to nine hundred, something like that. So, the, the short of it is, we're gonna need to pay the four point five million before we'll start seeing the proceeds from the revenue sharing coming in, unless all of a sudden there's some tremendous influx of subscribers. But in time, that will replenish that four point five million that we've got to borrow, at least partially. But we've got, it's sixteen point five percent of the subscription fees that we would be receiving with that revenue share. So, we can push that out till we do. The good thing is we used to, the rates hopefully are moderated and turned down, so we should have a follow-up money.
The other thing I wanna add is the Moses Building, the renovations, it shows eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, but if you remember that project, it's more like one point five million. And we took project money from our leftover funds that we didn't need to make debt payments with and we called that a project fund transfer. And so, that money currently sits in the general fund and we will transfer that over to go with this money because we had identified a project that we could use the project fund for. But, you know, what you wanna do is you have this extra debt service money and you trunk it over here in the fund and then you have a lot of money that you can use for a big project and it helps you to, where you don't have to borrow money for everything. And so, this year was the first year that we started this project fund and so, next year, the fund will grow because we have more debt coming off. So, as our debt falls off, we will continue to put money into the project fund until we need it for debt service. So, that means your debt service will be kept at a level that you all would be able to afford instead of taking that money and using it for this side or the other. But we'll maintain at a level that when you do borrow money, you're not saying, well, where are we gonna get that debt payment from? You've already kind of budgeted it. And in the meantime, you're gonna use that for one time only project, which will help.
So, this been a, that's, that's good news and that's a good move that we partially cash flowed this Moses Building instead of, it's a good enough and just, and it's a debt.
Correct.
So, that's, that's a good move, thank you.
And then, under parks and recreation, the schools' parks improvements, that's fifty-nine thousand one hundred dollars and that's a carryover of funds. Right now, that, they have a facility use agreement with the schools to be able to use facilities and right now, that sits at fifteen thousand dollars every year. So, we make sure that we budget those dollars and then that's what you all budgeted. The rest of it is money that has just been left over because the way the schools request that money or the way it's used is for projects that are mutually beneficial to both parks and recreation as well as to the school system, i.e. if they need to put a bathroom in or a school board, that might be something we utilize this money for. So, that's why it's kind of a balance, they haven't utilized it in a few years, so. And you can see how everything's funded, so it's funded by the general fund. We've got two point nine million dollars that's coming from the general fund. Carryover funds are seven point nine million dollars. And then, we, you will see that carryover PO and, and basically, that's not really true money, but it's just a true up that's actually there. So, all funding is ten point nine million dollars and that's how we get to that figure. And so, if you go to the treasurer's office, that's real dollars, that's real money, that sits in there. So, that's not just on paper, but it's also in the bank too. And so, that's how all of these projects line up and why you all need to see them so that you know where your dollars and cents are being spent. So, the next fund that we'll talk about is water and sewer and you should also have a paper on this one as well. So, we have this broken into two pieces, whether we're doing capital projects for water, infrastructure or for sewer infrastructure. So, most of these projects are actually funded with, right now, an EDA grant that we were able to secure or I'll give kudos to Chris Aircock, he looks for all kinds of ways to fund things with other people's money. And so, most of this is, is that, or we do take some money from, basically, the receipts from just water and sewer salespeople, your customers, to fund some of these projects. So, our total for water this year is one billion nine sixty-four nine seventy-five nine five ninety-eight. It does include the Robin Court Water System Improvements, which is a new construction project.
Good question.
Yes.
And maybe for, maybe Mr. Arnold, when we finally started that providing this court project.
I am not able to answer that at this time, but we will find you an answer for that.
Yes, sir.
That comes to the danger that by the end.
We'll follow, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Grace, what does an R and L Smith, what exchange, what is that?
That was included in this year's budget. It was a request by Chris to have that included and I think it's running water now, R and L Smith, I think. I'm pretty sure. We can get you some information on that as well, but that's what that money is for. That is not a grant or anything, that's just using some of their capital reserves for that. And then, we do have water capital reserve. Usually, you can build reserve when your rates, when your revenues that come in exceed your expenditures. And so, we do have some reserve that we can draw off of that is actually budgeted reserve. Our sewer capital totals two point six eight nine million and you can see those projects there. Most, all of those are being funded by that EDA grant. So, basically, that was a three million dollar grant and we get two point four million dollars covered by the EDA and then we had to put in a total of six hundred thousand dollars. So, that's a great investment, you know, to get that thing, projects taken care of in just six hundred thousand dollars. And so, that, our money's already been put in and, and this is an enterprise fund, so no other tax dollars go into this fund. It is self-sustaining, so everything is covered by rates or grants or what have you. So, right now, funding from all sources totals four point six million dollars for all of the capital that they have budgeted for it in the year. Any questions on that one?
Yes, sir. The, under the sewer, Ken, the checkpoint sewer, the station improvements, have that recently, where they're having problems up there, I'm just with the sewer up there. Is this part of that or is that gonna be something additional to that process?
That will be a Chris question and we can have him come and, and give you all updates on those projects. Um, and then the last one I'll go over is the capital for, um, solid waste. And so we have a solid waste capital outlay and a landfill capital outlay. And a lot of times, they're interchangeable. One should be for, uh, collections and one should be for disposal. I think that was the original intent of that. Um, so under solid waste capital outlay, there's a total of one million one forty-six, seven twenty-one, sixty-two. Um, we always buy a roll-off truck every year to keep ahead of trucks going. I mean, you can imagine how many miles will add up on those trash trucks. Um, and so we have one of those that's budgeted. And then we always put money in for, you know, compactor site improvements, um, and for, you know, a new compactor site. So that's money that's there for paving or for anything like that, um.
Okay, what do you have there, Ken? And I have listed in the, my material now off to the side.
It means it's done.
Okay.
It's finished.
The compactor site, uh, in Calhoun Hill, um, you know, we talked about making some changes. I think it started like two years ago, this is, what was it, yesterday?
Right, and so that money, that money would act, right, that money would actually come from either that compactor site funding, this two hundred and seventy-two thousand. And rather since we have a line of serve for Callahan Hill, we would just move money out of that line item into that particular apartment, if, if it hadn't already been here, Mark. But again, that's, Chris Adcock is responsible for all of those, so we would just have to see what we can do.
Thank you. Quickly, Mr. Question, please, you have, uh, Chris to come to, in October, you have reached out, please. And question for you, Mr. Ben, uh, the contracts out there in the land field, have they come, have they come to, now, to plan?
I, I think the end of twenty-five is the first one that's coming up for renewal. Yes, it's very important that we secure those contracts at the level of service that, that we provide. And, um, landfill is expensive. You know, it's nothing for, you know, bulldozers to go down, and you're spending over a hundred thousand dollars to get fixed one pot. And you can't plant or stuff like that, it just happens. Um, and it's hard to get people to work at landfill. I mean, we contract a lot of stuff. And, um, so hopefully, we can get good people that can come and, and work, and we won't have to dish up that money. But, um, it's an expensive thing.
It is, I mean, to remain aboard, I, I would also understand how pretty deep that is, uh, to, uh, revenue stream. Uh, because, you know, these private companies out there, they will bid against you and try to tap into and reduce the amount of revenue that we have come in to as enterprise funds. So we've got to be more knowledgeable to make sure that we are all over when those contracts come up.
They want to get in the game, too, yeah.
And just so, um, just as a matter of fact, there's a reserve of landfill capital counted by moving for water and sewer. Uh, probably three years ago was the last time we had to spend into that reserve.
Yeah.
So what that is, is when you collect more money than you're spending, you have reserve. And we will budget whatever that difference is in case you need to draw on it. Well, that pot's been dwindling for three years with nothing going in it. And that's because we've needed every single dollar to come in to make the budget up. So, um, and those funds were being handled for capital projects that we wouldn't have to borrow money, like the opening of new sales, um, buying a large bulldozer or a piece of equipment. And so, you know, we still have to pull on it from time to time because we have such major, um, repairs that have to be done. And so, you know, we still have a half a million dollars, which is nothing to shake a stick at, but we're not putting anything in there. So, um, it is important, and no additional tax dollars are going into the landfill fund. It do is self-sustaining, but that's why it's important to keep those contracts. And, um, that's why that solid waste household fee is charged. Um, I know a lot of it is not popular, but it's not additional tax that has to come to sustain this fund. So, um, and then landfill capital is at one million, like eight thousand. And then, um, this other landfill capital section is for your bond money you had left. So we borrowed money in twenty twenty-one to open a sale. We're currently working on another sale currently with the landfill money that we didn't borrow funds for. So currently, we've got four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars left of that bond money. And most of which is in the compactor site improvements. That's where we, um, utilized money for Mount Herman, you know, putting the extra compactor out there and paving and that kind of thing. So to answer your question on Callahan Hill, there's money there. I don't know what priority you all set up for the rest of this money, but we do need to spend it. I will tell you that we are in what you call arbitrage, which means that we have earned more interest on this money sitting in our account than we're allowed to by the internal revenue service. So we will have to pay some of that money back that we earned because we vowed that we would only make a certain level of interest. Well, of course, when inflation goes up and interest rates go up, I mean, we can't, we can't help that.
That's out of control.
We, we made quite a bit of money with that money sitting there.
Quick question, uh, how fast do we even, oh, we already, we already being penalized?
Uh, we're already being penalized, yeah, we've already made too much money. So they just said, just don't spend it all the way down. I think the last, I checked, we owed about twenty-five thousand dollars, maybe? It's not a month with some amount of money, uh, but we've made well over that. So it's not going to harm you in any kind of way. You just can't spend every, you know, they tell you, now be cautious, don't spend all this because if we're not spending it from this money, we'll have to, we'll definitely have to stroke that jigsaw when it, the time comes.
Yeah, quickly, quick comment, uh, we, we, we need, uh, an upgrade in the job of community of trash tonight, sir. Yes, sir.
Oh, what?
Trash collection.
I got, I got, I got one or two in my list, okay? We can spend this money tonight.
Just a moment.
Oh, awesome. Clarification, so you said the, uh, contracts end in twenty twenty-five, when did they?
The first one, I think December of twenty-five, if I were to know correctly.
Okay, okay.
Well, we can get you all a list of those dates.
Would you please?
And we, we see this for the end cycle, but I wanted to refresh. And who takes the lead for negotiating the contract?
Chris has been doing that, so he's looking for other opportunities. He's supposed to be doing that work, that big work.
Okay, all right, good. So I, you know, I would say during this next work cycle, we want to have the progress period on, on that book. And then there are another one, did it follow any of them?
Yes, they all come due in like dominoes. And we add them pretty quickly, on top of the others, so they just all come due at one time.
So the, I've got the dates on those, um, contracts.
Okay.
So twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, um, first Piedmont, which is the municipal waste contract with Marshall Henry County. That's when that one expires. And then five oh one, twenty twenty-five, just for days. And then, uh, that one expires, that's for the town of Edward trash. And then, uh, twenty, twenty-seven, so June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, is when the first Piedmont's contract with City Daniel, that's when that one expires. So two of the three are set to expire in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, good, thank you. We kind of getting off topic, but good information.
So two point seven, that's how you get that. And of course, um, four hundred and ten thousand dollars of the household solid waste fee is what's helping to fund those capital projects this year. Um, and the rest are carryover funds, so. Um, any questions about capital?
Questions, Mr. Ben.
So we can move on to our last topic, which is our car leases. And my, the great sheriff is here tonight, um, to help in this discussion. Um, just to give you all some backstory about this, back during pandemic, we found that it was advantageous for us at that time to enter into a lease with Enterprise for some cars for our sheriff's office. Well, I call them vehicles because they're more S U Vs than they are cars. And so at that time, our, that lease started, actually, we negotiated in twenty, but we don't actually start making lease payments until we receive the car. And so our first car came on the lot of those eighteen in February twenty twenty-one. We bought a total of eighteen vehicles or leased them for sixty months, and our annual lease payment on those eighteen cars is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand and fifty dollars. So a total of sixty-nine thousand forty-two dollars and twenty-three cent is due if the sheriff decides to purchase these cars at the end of the lease. So what Enterprise would like for you to do is at the end of the lease, you turn that car back in, they sell it, you have equity in the new car. Well, sometimes that doesn't really work for us because we find that we could utilize that car in, for somewhere else, and it hadn't, it hadn't worn out yet, so we might want to keep it. And so the eighteen cars would cost us sixty-nine thousand dollars at the end of the lease. And of course, they have to come due at different times because we've got the cars at different times. And then a total of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred one ninety-two is still due and will be paid off in June twenty twenty-seven. So even though it was a five-year lease, you can see how supply chain is going to end up being like six years before they're all said and done. And so that little chart that's on your sheet shows that this year, we'll spend out a hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine ninety-five thirty-two. In twenty twenty-six, that'll fall down to one twenty-nine, two thirty-one fifty-three. And in twenty twenty-seven, we have a residual amount of a lease payment of twenty-one thousand five seventy-five oh seven. That's how you get that two eighty-eight figure. But the two eighty-eight does not include that sixty-nine thousand dollars. That will be additional funds that we would need to come up with. So we'll fast forward, like, um, two years, last year, I guess it was, we decided to enter into a new lease with Enterprise. And we thought, okay, this is going to be very similar to what we had with the first lease. And so we went into a lease for twenty-two vehicles this time at sixty months and an annual lease amount of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. And so as we start getting the first deals on some of these leased cars, we find out, oh, they're expecting a down payment this time that we didn't have to do the first time. And that's because the cost of updating those vehicles has become so expensive. And Enterprise basically said, you wouldn't want to finance that piece of it. Really, they wouldn't allow us to, they, they required that we make a down payment. So our down payment currently that we owe on these twenty-two cars is eighty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars. Um, and of course, you know, we need to, we will be making those down payments, but as we review these, um, this lease, um, interest rates are now twice what they were back when we got the first lease. We believe it's going to be more advantageous for us to buy these cars and get out of the lease. Um, I'm not sure right now exactly what that cost will be. We have a meeting with Enterprise on September the nineteenth, where they will try to talk us out of getting out of the lease.
Sure.
They've already tried that, I mean, we asked them what it was to buy out the lease, and they sent me some figures which were, the amount was a little over a million dollars. Um, and that's why we've taken notice of the carryover from the sheriff and banked it. Um, there is some money that I think I could pull from somewhere else to make up that difference. And that way, we, we wouldn't have to, um, we'll have to make the down payment, I feel sure, because we'll have to pay it either on the front end or the back end. But what they're telling us now is that we will probably have to be in the lease for at least six months because that's what Dodge, uh, the maker of the Durango's, is saying is their requirement. And there may be some back fees that we may have to pay because Enterprise was able to get discounts because they were leasing these cars to a government entity, and they, as such, were first owners. We are now considered second owners if we buy the cars. And so therefore, we may have to pay those fees back, even though we are the government that got them the discounts in the first place. But we will find out more in September, but wanted to let you all be aware that this is happening, that we are talking about it. Um, we want more than utilize or be good stewards of our money. And if we see that it's really going south, we probably need to do something different. Um, I even checked with our financial advisors, thinking, you know, what if we have to borrow these funds? And, um, what they said that we probably would do is enter into a, a master equipment financing, um, that we can do through a bank. She checked with two banks, and she could get an interest rate of like three point six five. Right now, that interest rate in Enterprise is over seven percent that we're paying. So she said, I don't even have to do the math to tell you, you need to probably abandon the lease.
Yes.
So, um, but the good thing is, I think we would be able to find the funds without having to go that route this time. But we need to come up with some kind of schedule so that we're not always behind the eight ball. The sheriff never has enough vehicles, I mean, we never have enough to, to get him rotated to where everything is hunky-dory, and it would be nice to get them on a schedule. He can speak more to it.
I'm not sure that does. I can tell you what the mileage is.
Okay.
Can you, can you use Mike for the benefit of the public, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
What we've run along in the past is that since there is no schedule to, um, replace cars, we, we have cars now with a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand miles. So by the time you replace your oil, the state bids come out, you're replacing them. You may still be another eighteen months for those cars to be completed. Then when we get the cars, another issue we ran up on was, you know, each time they change, they'll change the model of the car. So nothing we have, like the cages, the outfits, we have to, we have to change because they won't fit. And I think that's a business model that they use, uh, to get extra money. So we can't, we, we have to buy new equipment to put into the cars to make them safer to officers. Uh, it was maybe the last cars we bought, um, stayed at the shop for almost two years before the outfit got put into them. So by the time they get on the road, the warrant is already gone. And so I, it was in one of these meetings, and I think, Mr. Tucker, you may have been in that meeting with, uh, Mr. Warren, it was decided that maybe the board should look at, um, setting a schedule to replace the cars instead of waiting two or three years and we just really be behind, uh, come to safety issue for the cars on the road.
Thank you, Mr. T, um, and, and you're exactly right, a couple of things, um, and I ask, Mr. Ben, that today for a complete physical inventory, I will take a look at all of the cars that you actually have at your disposal. And yes, we had discussed some type of rotation, uh, and scheduling, you need some cars in and out, that sort of thing. Um, but I guess my question is, who do we have in charge of actually doing the physical, uh, inventory of all these cars?
Our staff.
Your staff?
Yes, sir, and that, and that's been done, uh, and we, we provided that.
Okay.
Uh, we went to each car, which will give all the background information on the car and the mileage, uh, so that, that's been done.
Yeah, my, my last question, and, uh, we're going to figure this out, I promise you. Um, the, the, the last question, with our S R Os on those offices that are driving those vehicles to school and their car stays parked all day, um, is there a plan with the low mileage cars that to, uh, shift them maybe to someone that's controlling that sort of thing?
Yes, and we put that in place.
Okay.
Uh, we, we replaced the high mileage cars with the S R Os just because of the fact that they do, uh, sit at the schools most of the day. And so we replaced those with patrol cars that sees more mileage and the simple process of cars and seeing a lot of mileage in a year's time.
Yeah, you have sort of monitoring that.
Yes, sir, of course.
Awesome. Um, you know, I would like to, myself personally, and, and, uh, we're, we're going to, like I said, we're going to figure it out, but- we're, we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna figure it out, but we need to, uh, have staff sit down, come up with some type of viable, uh, rotation or some type of system in place, take a look at, uh, you know, whether you break it out in, in fourth thirds, every forty years, we ought to be rotating X amount of cars, and that way you keep fresh inventory. And we get into a rotation, which will give us an opportunity, you know, in terms of maybe grieving to be able to find, provide the revenue, or plan to basically have that revenue in place, okay? So I, I think that is something that we kind of need to, to jump on, we kind of need to.
Can I tell you, in fact, years back, um, the, the sheriff's office would keep a car to about eighty thousand miles, and then they would buy new cars, and they would give those cars to the other departments within the county, so that didn't require a lot of mileage. Uh, so it was cost savings on, for the other agencies, and we kept new cars in fleet.
Well.
We got away from that.
Yes, sir, the reason I suggest that, that's in the room, is the way my background was in automobiles. It doesn't matter how much you love a vehicle, okay, it doesn't matter how much that patrol officer feels like that his posterior fits that seat. We need a hard cutoff of time or miles on that vehicle, and we need to figure out what's the best use of disposing of that car. Do we sell it? Do we, um, transfer it to another department as you suggested? So we have to, you know, have some type of system and some type of policy in place, and make sure that we are at the right to. That, that's all I'm saying, and that will better help us to budget and also plan as we go forward. Now, um, my comments on the lease, um, because of where the interest rates are, okay? Uh, what you're doing on a lease is you're compressing money in a shorter window of time. So the only winner in that lease is the actual financial institution that's actually writing the paper, okay? Um, now, when they say they're going to charge us to outfit the vehicle, well, they're gonna charge us a fee, a down payment to initiate the lease. What they're doing is, they are actually putting the cost, they are loading upfront the cost of outfitting the vehicles, so you're not really getting anything, they're actually having us pay for it, and telling us that, that they're giving it to us, okay? So, uh, I, I, I really believe that we need to go ahead and buy these vehicles, and if you just use simple math, your annual lease payments is a hundred thousand dollars difference. Five years, that's probably a thousand dollars, ten years, you've, uh, spent, and, and that number's gonna continue to increase, okay? So, uh, but, like I said, uh, we're gonna have this call, and we're going to go to route, in my opinion, my home opinion, and we'll go before the board. But I think it's wise to go ahead and purchase the vehicles, but at the same time, we have to lay the foundation, we have to get a good solid plan in place, and we have to maybe write out a car policy, and, and I think, you know, the staff will need that force.
I, I agree, it, it probably will carry over to other agencies, other departments within, within the county. And one of the things, Mr. Short, and as Van Haas brought it up, and in discussion, if, if, if we go down the road with a leasing program, we're gonna get to a point that we cannot back out, it's not gonna be cost effective, so we, certainly don't want to put this ahead.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I was just asking the sheriff, that you make a prior coming into this budget cycle, and maybe it's the same, you know, when you're upcoming budget, because based on the delay of ordering vehicles, I don't think we can start too early on getting this done, and maybe figure out how many vehicles you would need, uh, and just like Mr. Tucker said, and you said, uh, try to, try to put this in the rotation before, uh, you've got, say, ten vehicles each year coming in, you know, I don't know how many you've got, I mean, you're in the middle right now, but whatever that number is, we're actually looking forward to rotate those vehicles out, and have new ones in line, get ready for the place. And so I would, I would say, is try to get this, these numbers down to the point where we can consider them during the upcoming budget.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. And who upsets those cars for you? Who does the outfit, the factory do the outfit, or are they done, they sent to a shop somewhere?
Right now, we, we deal with a shop in Charlottesville, uh, that's who we've been dealing with, but, and of course, when we call, they just can't get the help. Uh, and they, they're just so far behind on the outfit. Uh, and they, and they just about, what they tell us is, when that car comes in, because of all of their electronics on it, um, and all of the airbags, you have to be so careful at that, but they just about have to dismantle their car to run the equipment. Uh, it used to be plug and play, uh, the, the cars would come, and, and that was basically it, you just plugged in the connectors, but no more. Uh, that, that's changed. So it, it, it takes a while, but, you know, two years sets up, that's a long time.
It is a long time. They call it two years old, now y'all get it, don't they?
Yes, sir.
This, this, this ready to be traded then, when you get it.
We ask them to, every now and then, go out to at least move the cars so they're in a flat, on a flat place on the tires. Uh, but what we do about it, we, we ask.
Is that the only place that's around that could do that? Could you load a truck, a trailer hook and send them somewhere or something, that, um, custom, or county's custom, let them fix you up a few of them?
Get money, make it straight, damn it.
There you go, man.
It'd take a couple months. I think we put that in the budget.
But, but, you know, again, uh, as Mr. Whittle's point, all of that has to be taken into consideration, in terms of appreciating that vehicle, and, you know, I guess, may have to, we need to shuffle around and see if we can find additional upgrades. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm, I agree with y'all, I'd like to see that stay local, if we can get somebody to up them. Uh, you know, back in the twenty years ago, we put the stickers on them, we put the cages on them, we carried the compliment radio, we did blading, kind of up it. We done it right in chat.
We found a solution.
And I mean, it looked like if somebody local would help us out on that, and get out of these leases, and buy your car straight out and take care of them. That's what I, I'd like to see.
I wish I was a, a local shop.
Yeah.
That would do that. Uh, and since we're with Harris Radio now, and the motor, not with Motorola, our shop in Blair's was Motorola, and they wouldn't allow it. Uh, but you have to be very careful, I know we outfitted one with, uh, one company, and it wasn't long before we started having transmissions trouble. And we found out that they mounted the screws inside the transmission, uh, so you have to be very careful about.
Would that mess with the warranty if you did it wrong?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Can these cars be ordered with more wiring harness and stuff in place that would help to up them? I mean, going back to where it used to be, like I said, the wires are there, you plug them up. So when they build a vehicle for a sheriff's department or state troop, verify that that's what it's going to, 'cause maybe they can add more wiring.
Sure, uh, let me answer your questions, sir. They have a concept at the assembly line called pro, de-proliferation.
Oh.
It's not like the olden days, when you had the punch car, and you were able to order that car, and tell them when you want to. For economic reasons, they only run two or three different lines, and, you know, you just go right there and there's somebody.
And give it to you for a while. Fifteen, I thought you were gonna try. I'd have one, I'd have one as well, that's why I said. Hundred, that's why.
But, uh.
Thank you, Paul, yeah, thank you, Sheriff.
I don't have anything else unless you all have questions or?
Um, I'm, I'm good, if everyone's good, and I think we have a consensus here, that, uh, we just need to go back and get off of this Ferris wheel. Because, you know, when, when we got on the Ferris wheel, they said they won't stop and let us off, now we're not stopping.
Well, it makes more sense now to get out of it.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, committee members, anything?
I don't have anything, sir.
Anything, Mr. Height?
No.
Anything, Mr. Board?
Great discussion, thank you.
Thank you all so very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Whittle.
Oh, Mr. Whittle. And Mr. Height?
Mr. Whittle.
Mr. Whittle?
Yeah, we good.
You sure?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Me and him will go start a company outfit.